I worked with this guy, the British. This is all he wanted, like he's a house. They're like, so tired of it. He's been happy ever since.
I wouldn't lie.
And work.
God, he's.
See?
You don't have that.
Yes. We have a fall.
Oh, definitely.
No, in council.
That was a perfect.
And we're going to talk about this day on schedule and go to the order of the regular meetings for West Valley City Council. This Jim, April tenth, twenty twenty five, every year around interest at six thirty P M. And then council chambers of the West Valley City Hall. All members of the council, our appointment, council, 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 member, Carmen, council, member, Kim. Council member Christensen, council member Norville, and myself, we're also committed to the guidance of our city manager, Mr. Beverly. And our city board, Mr. Cameron. Our only ceremony in the city will turn the time to the council.
Thank you. I know that all of us stand together and sign on the bottom of the big bed. I collect the agents of still alive, I would be a man in South America. And to the Republic for your sustenance. One nation, a liberty, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have our minutes, uh, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. To the council for our respectful.
Seven.
Thank you. On one and seven, I'll make you say aye.
Aye.
Under is there any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, well.
Go to our. We will now accept public comment. Comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their men, their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor. You will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up, please give us your name and address. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the council during comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Comments shall be limited to city business and matters within the purview of the city council. Speakers should not expect any debate with the mayor, city council, or city staff. The mayor, city council, city staff may respond after the con- comment period has concluded. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, and members of the city council. If you are here for the quarterly budget opening, application G P one, twenty twenty five. That addresses the moderate income housing plan or application G P Z three, twenty twenty five for property at fifty nine ninety west, thirty five hundred south. We will have separate public hearings for those matters, and it would be best to hold your comments until that time. Thank you. So speaker number one. Randy. There we go.
Mayor, council. Randy Lucero, longtime resident, West Valley. Been here talking about the same issue over and over for years now, and nothing's been done. The noise complaint at Western Gardens. They play their music so loud, it vibrates the windows. They do it until ten o'clock, then they cut it off, so that's good. But it's just annoying. It's bad. You can't even sit in your own backyard and barbecue. And listen to your own little music in your own little area because of what's going on over there. We already talked about how the walls not high enough in the first place because we sit and watch the forklifts move back around down there. We watch them working all day, all, all day long. Uh, they didn't design it right because of the elevation of that strip mall. Strip malls up here and the housing right here. Yeah, they put up a seven foot wall. But don't do us no good. The simplest solution again, one more time, is that. You just tell them to turn the music down. There's no reason for them to have the music that loud. For their graduation parties, weddings, receptions, I don't care what it is. They should be able to celebrate that stuff, but they don't need to have the music that loud where it's annoying every one of us in that strip right there. I don't think you guys give a shit. That's the end of my story. I'm done coming here again. I've been coming as these for years. I live West Valley longer than any of you have been alive. Well, most of you. Uh. But it's, it's simple. Turn the music down. I was hoping they'd build the wall higher, but they can't do that. That's too expensive. They should have did that in the first place, I think, because it's a strip mall and they have all the businesses right there. We hear their air conditioners kicking on and their garbage trucks there slamming their doors at nighttime in the morning. It's a noise issue. It's annoying. If any of you had lived there, if any of you, I guarantee if any one of you lived where we lived. This would have been stopped a long time ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Speaker two.
Hey, Mike Markham, as you all know. Two weeks ago, I ruffled some feathers about some comments I made about different people attending the. Uh, Veterans Day, not Veterans Day, Memorial Day ceremony at the Veterans Hall. But my comment also should have gone on to say that. If you're an elected official. For West Valley City. I believe your duties go beyond. Spending the money that you make, the thirty grand a year that y'all make. There needs to be people going out and doing something, showing themselves in their communities. Um, showing up. Um, I was at even one of my neighborhood block parties. And I guess she's watched me up here too many times, and she walked up and looked at me and said. Are you Mike Markham? And I said, I am, if that's good, and I'm not if that's bad. But she just lives down the street from me, so she knows better. Yeah, I think if you're on the council, you need to show up at somebody's dawn. He always has something to report. I know Karen, she's always on the go. She's, she's not sitting still, you know, doing things, and she's trying to run a dang successful business right now with flower pots. And by the way, I have had a ton of compliments on my pots. Um. But yeah, get out, show some interest other than. Your paycheck, get out there, be seen, do something. Um. Bang on your neighbor's door, drive around, honk and wave, not just in your ward, but in your whole district. Get, let people get out and know you, because I know y'all. Y'all belong in, in a ward. So. You know, get out and, and, and be seen and do some things and, and. You know, it's like I've always said it with the neighborhood stuff, you know, my biggest expense is my sweat to get out and pull weeds and do that kind of stuff. But if you don't know how to sweat or you don't have the money to buy it, then your parents went bad. Because your parents should have taught you how to sweat and get out and work and do things and be part of a community. And trust me, I grew up in a. Crappy household. My stepdad was a heavy smoking, heavy drinking truck driver from Pocatello, and you best not step on his toes. So, you know, you have to get out and you have to perform. And if you can't perform, if you got too many other duties going on and you can't perform, you have to decide which duty you want. So, you know, that's, that's my story and I'm sticking to it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Speaker three. David.
I'm for the rezone.
Okay.
Sorry if I signed in the wrong area.
You're just fine. Okay, speaker four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm back. Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to. Um, the Faith Forward Utah event. If you haven't heard of it, it's kind of like our, um, my hometown interfaith council on steroids. And what they're, I say that because their whole goal is to bring all the faith leaders from every single faith in the state together and have them work. Similar to our. Um, my hometown. And, uh, there was two residents from West Valley that were invited, and fortunately I was one of them. It's a very. Good event to go to. Our, um, Derek Brown spoke, and he's kind of a cool guy. It was his birthday, and so we got to do a bunch of stuff with him. Uh, he's our attorney general, if you didn't know that. And, um, and he gave us a lot of education, but the, the, the whole purpose of this, it's like our interfaith council is bringing the face together, faith together. And talking, using the pastors, getting out and, um, with all this fear and stuff that's going on in, in society, letting people know. Um, you know, the unified police is not out there. West Valley Police are not out there arresting people and pulling them off the street for no reason and stuff. And there's, there's legitimately people are out there and the faith leaders need, are getting together and coming out with the same message. And so it was, it was in the Attorney General's office was able to, you know, um, speak about it too. So it was cool to have all that together. And so that's why I think I've missed in the last ten years, maybe five or six meetings. And so that's where I was, and I was thinking about you guys, you know, when I would see the times go by, I'm like, okay, that's public comments, like that, so. But, but that's what, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So was there anyone else that wished to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay. We'll go to our public hearings. We'll begin, um, with our first one, which is. Ordinance twenty five dash eleven, and this is our first, our fourth. Quarter budget opening. Budget openings are periodic adjustments to West Valley City's operating budget. Regular budget openings are necessary to maintain regular and orderly city operations and stay in compliance with state laws. So. Did, um, Jim want to do any presentation or are we good with what we have?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, the summary that you read on the budget openings is pretty, uh, pretty descriptive. Uh, to kind of expand a little bit on that, um, the budget openings by state law are required to modify the existing budget. Um, for the benefit of the, uh, the audience and those that may be listening online. Um, every dollar that's appropriated by the city government has to be appropriated by the governing board and at you. So if there's grants that come in, or if there's a change in expenditure that, that needs to occur, or an opportunity or an emergency that comes up, these things need to be addressed. Uh, this is, as you mentioned, the fourth budget opening, which is the fourth modification of our budget. Um, there are a number of items in there that, uh, that we've discussed mostly in the study session. I'd be happy to answer any questions about some of those. Most of them have to do, at least the larger ones have to do with either, uh, property purchases or else infrastructure improvements. Uh, we also have some things that are in there that are grant receipts. And, um, so when someone has, has gone out and applied for additional money to come into the city, that also has to be appropriated. Otherwise, you know, we're not able to do anything with it. So, uh, that's, that's this budget opening. It will be the final one of the year. Uh, our fiscal year ends in June thirtieth, and then, um, we'll start all over again next year after the adoption of the final, of the next year's budget.
Okay. Any questions for Jim? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this matter?
Hi, once again, Jim Vsok. Um, I'm going to do my, my normal thank you to, um, Director Welch and his staff for the, the all inclusive reports that they give. Um, if you go back five, six years, you know, we used to get a, a page with numbers on it and you had to research it. Now it makes it easy because I carry budgets in my car. Somebody asked me about, I can show it to them. And having that report and say, this is exactly what's going on. It's, you know, we're moving money from this grant, you know, out of this account into there. It makes it so much easier, especially with the bigger dollars, like, why are they spending a million and a half dollars on this? And we're not really spending, you know, they're moving money around. And so in having that information and the way it's gone from, like I said, from a number where you had to kind of go, then ask questions to having a full. Um, detail that I appreciate it and makes it so much easier to educate our neighbors out there. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no others, I will now close the public hearing and turn the time over to the council for discussion or a motion on ordinance twenty five dash eleven. Which would amend the budget for West Valley City for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five to the council.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty five dash eleven.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamek.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hune.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Norville.
Yes.
And Mayor Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. So we'll now move on to application G P one, twenty twenty five. And state code requires that cities. Requires cities to include a moderate income housing element or plan in our general plan. The last date, update to the city's moderate income housing plan was adopted in twenty twenty two. This update will include census data from twenty twenty three and will reflect significant increases in home values. Rents and mortgage rates. So I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Nope, I will now close the public hearing and to turn the time over to the council for discussion or a motion on ordinance twenty five dash twelve. That would adopt the twenty five, twenty twenty five moderate income housing plan.
Mayor, I'll motion to approve ordinance twenty five dash twelve.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamek.
Councilmember Norville.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hune.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
And Mayor Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. We'll now go to G P Z three, twenty twenty five, and there'll be three action items to this application. Clark Construction and Service LLC is requesting a general plan change from large lot residential and general commercial to low density residential. And a zone change from agriculture to R one eight. The portion of property adjacent to thirty five hundred south. With the existing dwelling will continue to be agriculture. The property is located at fifty nine ninety west, thirty five hundred south. I will now open the public hearing. Is there what, anyone here to speak on this issue?
Good evening. Mayor. Members of the city council. My name is Dave Tolman. I reside at thirty eight thirteen Highland Court in Bonifat, Utah. I'll be representing Clark Construction. Uh, in the rezone application. It's been a while since I've been in front of the West Valley City Council. I don't know if any of you remember me, um, but. I was fortunate enough to. Bring a piece of property on thirty one hundred. South. Next to the east side of the, uh, uh, recreation complex. I was able to work with several of the planners who are still here today. To bring about a new community, um, one that had. Trails, uh, landscape, park strip in front, other amenities, a beautiful entry monument. And, um, it's something I've been really proud of. I drive by it often. It's something that I enjoyed working with the staff. Um, many of the faces are new. A couple are not that I've known for a long time. Um. I've been a developer and a builder for over forty years along the Wasatch Front. I've worked with most of the city councils and cities. For good or for bad. Mostly good. But I wanted to state before I get started that. Your staff is amongst the best of the staffs I've worked with. They're terrific people, and you should know that. You probably do. Um. The property we're, we're going to talk tonight is located, as it was said, on fifty nine ninety west. On thirty five hundred south. Um, if you look at the concept plan that's in front of you. You look at lots seven through eleven and the, and the small crosshatched area. That property is currently zoned R one eight. If you then look at lots one through six. That property is owned agriculture now. And we're requesting a zone change from agriculture to R one eight, matching what already exists on the property to the west. There are things I guess I could say about it. People get concerned a little bit when you hear R one eight is that's, are those small lots? Um, if you look at the average lot size in lots. One through eleven, it's just under ten thousand square feet. Some of those are larger lots, but most of them are larger than the required R one eight zone. It's a typical infill site. To the lame person, as they look at it, they say, well, what does that mean? I'm sure you deal with it all the time. That shows the, or talks about the already improved properties. As you can see from the site, you have, uh, uh, existing homes on the west and on the north. You have some open space and housing on the, on the east, and then you have thirty five hundred south. Um. Infill properties as a developer are unique and usually bring lots of challenges with them. In this site, you can see that the shape is irregular, which brings about some inefficiencies. But probably the biggest challenge is the access coming from the Meadowland. Uh, subdivision, which enters on the, on the east side of the property, the northeast side of the property. Um, as I mentioned, the site itself, and maybe I didn't, but it's only four point oh six acres, a small site. That includes the, uh, lot twelve, which is staying agriculture, uh, with the house that's on it. So realistically, we're talking about around three and a half acres. When you bring a, a road in like that and you have to quickly move, as in this case, to the west. To service those properties, you move to the south, and then you have to move back to the east. Uh, those create some challenges with the radius that you have to deal with in the code. Um, and in addition to that, with the cul-de-sac, you can see how that pushes up against lot three. Uh, while I'm at the cul-de-sac, I should mention that that can also be used in the future for access to the property. Uh, to the east of us in the event that, that, um, one of those owners wants to try and do that. Uh, as, as we've outlined in the dotted line, you can see the.
Okay, your time is up.
My time is up.
Yep, sorry.
Well, I, if you have any additional, if you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this issue?
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment that I'm glad to see we're looking at putting in single family dwellings. Instead of trying to squeeze into their, um, multiple family dwellings where there's one. Happening in my backyard. Um, yeah, I like the idea of the single family dwellings instead of more and more and more multiple family dwellings being in the city. We've got a lot of them now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn the time over to the council for discussion or emotion. We have three action items, and the first is ordinance twenty five dash thirteen. And that would amend the general plan ordinance.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty five dash thirteen.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, that passes. We'll now go to ordinance twenty five dash fourteen, which would amend the zoning map to the council. I'll move to approve ordinance twenty five dash fourteen.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamek.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hune.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Norville.
Yes.
And Mayor Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then our last is resolution twenty five dash seventy eight, which would approve the development agreement.
Mayor, um, I wonder if the council would, um. Support an addition to the development agreement to not allow basement entrances. Um, into the homes at construction. If anybody's interested in joining me to add that to the development agreement.
Is that a motion with that addition?
Well, yeah, we'll make it a motion. Um. That we approve the development agreement, but add a, a restriction for basement entrances. For those homes. Uh, until after C of O.
Okay.
Or future owner. But the.
Second.
Builder can't do that.
Yep.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So after occupancy.
Yeah.
You'd allow. Okay.
Yeah, if a future homeowner wanted to do it, that's fine. We just, uh, my concern is treasure aisle. It's always on my mind. And so if we have a builder that puts in basement apartments in all of them, then we have twelve. Twelve homes that have parking issues and. This is a tight space to have parking issues for, so.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, Ms. Kamek.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hune.
No.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Norville.
Yes.
And Mayor Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to our consent agenda. We have six items on our consent agenda this evening. These items include a. Agreement with D L S Consulting to purcha-. The purchase of fitness room equipment from Pacific Fitness Products LLC. Installation of equipment by Magna Water for the Waterland Park and awarding a contract to B Hanson Construction for the thirty five hundred south. Fifty four hundred west safe sidewalk project and some of their typical, um, exec- acceptance of deeds and easements. To the council for a discussion or a motion.
I move to approve all of the items of the consent agenda. Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamek.
Councilmember Norville.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hune.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
And Mayor Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do have one item of new business this evening, which is resolution twenty five dash eighty five. To authorize the execution of an interlocal cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County for drug overdose. Mitigation. West Valley City through its Healthy West Valley Committee will use the grant funding in the amount of twenty thousand dollars provided through the overdose data, data to. Act, to action proposal to educate residents on the opioid crisis. act to action proposal to educate residents on the opioid crisis, how it may impact residents of the city and resources available to the community. To the council for discussion or a motion?
Mayor, given that this was just presented tonight, I don't know if Alex is here to answer a question or if there's another member of staff that could answer a question on it. The contract that was attached just had three zip codes, and I'm just curious, it sounded like during the presentation that material would go citywide, especially on social media. But is there a reason for those specific three zip codes? And will the services from this grant be offered citywide?
Zip codes related to the study that, pardon me, that Alex referenced earlier from last year. The resources will be citywide, so that they will be for the entire community.
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash eighty-five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session, so we just have one more action item.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. We'll now go to our other three meetings for the evening.
The first is the redevelopment agency.
All right.
Cindy Wood, Chair of the RDA Agency. I guess that's what you call it. I call to order the redevelopment agency meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-five. It is seven o'clock. And we are here in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. I will note that all members of the agency are present, and we've already had our opening ceremony this evening. We have our minutes of May sixth, twenty twenty-five, and is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I move to approve those minutes. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The first agenda item is a public hearing for accept public input regarding reopening the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Consider resolution twenty-five zero four, amend the budget of West Valley City Redevelopment Agency for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five to reflect changes in the budget from increased revenues and authorize the disbursement of funds. This item is to amend the budget of the redevelopment agency for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. I will now open the public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? I will now close the public hearing and turn the time over to the agency for a discussion or a motion.
I would motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero four.
Second.
Thank you. Will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Whitestone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairperson Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to accept public input regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. The action is to consider resolution twenty-five zero five, adopt the annual budget of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six. This item is to adopt the redevelopment agency annual budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? I will now close the public hearing and turn the time over to the agency for discussion or emotion.
Move to approve resolution twenty-five zero five. Second.
Will you please take the roll call vote?
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Whitestone?
Yes.
And Chairperson Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution twenty-five zero six to authorize the agency to execute two warranty deeds to convey certain property to West Valley City. The properties included in this resolution were purchased by the RDA to be included as a part of the Fairborn Project and are now part of the rights-of-way for Constitution Boulevard and Market Street. The proposed resolution resolution would transfer these parcels from the RDA to the city. I'll turn the time over to the agency for discussion or emotion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero six.
Second.
Nicole, will you please take the roll call vote?
Mr. Whitestone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairperson Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
We'll call to order the meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority today, June tenth. The time is seven oh four. I will note that all members are of the Housing Authority are here or have been here. And opening ceremony has taken place. I will put it to the authority for the meeting minutes of May sixth, twenty twenty-five, for a discussion or a motion.
Move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
First item of business is a public hearing to accept input regarding the reopening of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. And this item is to amend the budget of the Housing Authority for this fiscal year. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? I will now close the public hearing and turn the time to the agency for the discussion or a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero three.
Motion for approval and a
Second.
And a second. Ms. Kamic for a roll call?
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Whitestone?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So next item is the public input regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. This item is to adapt adopt the Housing Authority annual budget for this fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. I will open the public hearing for this matter. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn the time to the agency for a discussion or a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero four. Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote?
Um, Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
And Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And Chairperson Whitestone?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'll accept one final motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call to order building authority tonight, as right now is seven ten, and opening ceremonies that we did early tonight. Roll calls, the area council members is here, and approval minutes, we have a May sixth, twenty twenty-five, so I need that motion in a second for that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion as a second, so all favors in this motion, please say aye.
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 Yeah, this motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We have an item right here at the public hearing tonight is the fiscal years, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budgets. And this item is to amend the budgets of the building authorities for the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five fiscal year. So now I will open to the public hearing. So anyone who wants to speak about this one, this matter, to come up to microphone and do it. None? So I will close this public hearing and will turn it over to the council for motion or discussion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash zero four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll turn over to City Recorder, Nico Kamat.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Whitestone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Hune?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Another item is the item five B. We have a fiscal year twenty-five, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six budgets. So this item is to adopt the building authority annual budgets for the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six fiscal year. So I will yeah, fiscal year, and I will turn it over to the public. And anyone who wants to come up and speak for this matter, at least none, I will turn it back to the council for discussing the motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash oh five.
We have a motion, we have a second. We'll turn over to Nico Kamat for City Recorder.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Whitestone?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And Chairman Hune?
Yeah, yes. Thank you. We have one more motion for tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. So we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.